Hello and welcome to the Select Board's meeting for Monday, July 17th at 6:30 PM. If you could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. We're gonna rearrange the order of the agenda a little bit just to make things a little bit more expedient and to get people that are here for different things on their way so that there's less confusion. We will be talking about the traffic things as part of our action items, so if you're here to talk about that, you don't need to do that as part of open forum, but is anybody here for open forum that isn't related to something on the agenda? Yes?
Yes.
Come on, you can come up to the table.
Hi, good evening.
Good day, Rich.
I think we've all made each other's acquaintance one time or another, but my name is Richard O'Flaherty, and I'm a resident here in town past 36 years, and I live over on Hobart Street, 31 Hobart Street, as a matter of fact. So what I'm here to do is to voice a concern that I have about the street, Hobart Street, and if you don't mind, I have some pictures that I would like to pass up here, and you're welcome to keep them.
Sure.
So these pictures were taken yesterday, just before noon time, so prior to the second storm that we had later in the afternoon. Now, for the past few weeks, you know, when we've had some rainy weather, you'll notice that there's some puddling, and that's at a house right across the street from me, diagonally across. Now, that's been puddled like that for, you know, a couple of weeks. Now, that road, as you know, is, a new water main was put in, Hobart and going up Maple Ave. And so the road isn't in that great a shape because of that. But more of a concern now with the heavy vehicle traffic comes, you know, the trailer truck, UPS, Amazon, FedEx, you know, that use that to go up, you know, into the center of town, it's depressing the road a little bit. So if you notice that one picture where the puddling is, well, there's a big depression there. So when I took that picture, there were a couple of kids that were riding their bikes going down to the ball field to practice, and I said, "Watch out for that, there's a pothole there." You can't see it 'cause, you know, the rain is, or the water has filled it up. And they go, "Yeah, we know," 'cause they pointed to one of the kids, "He fell off his bike." Now, he didn't injure himself that bad, apparently, but there are cars that have to dodge, that know that, you know, frequent that area. They come up on my property, so a car coming down Hobart Street going to Union, you know, can travel. So it's causing a problem for me, you know, and part of my land at the end by the telephone pole, and you'll see a picture there, 'cause I have a picture of some depression. Now, back last year, I put a significant investment into that property with the help of the town. I put a brand-new septic system, and it cost me $68,000. So I can't, now, when I had it done, contractor I had landscaped it and seeded it, so, but, you know, during that time, we had the road construction, and now, it's, you know, because of the wet weather and, you know, it's not, it's just washing up under my property. But the biggest concern I have here, folks, is that three weeks ago, a company came in, took out the catch basins, and filled each catch basin from Maple Ave down to Hobart Street with dirt. So there's no drainage. So yesterday, you know, last evening around 6 o'clock, I'm watching and it's sheet flowing. It's just pouring down, it's not getting drained to, you know, the way it would out into Forge Pond, and now it's being diverted, depressing my land, and it's going out into the wetlands. Now, my property is flagged for wetlands, so, you know, there was a concern when I was serving on the planning board back some years ago with that type of concern, with developers who, you know, putting up properties, and the drainage wasn't adequate, you know. Planning Board at that time, as well as the Conservation Commission, they frowned upon something that, you know, didn't have a diversion and a design that didn't prevent sheet flow. So my request is, and I see John Haynes here.
He's right behind you.
I know, I seen him.
Avoiding eye contact.
No, I think I can speak to Ms. O'Flaherty's concerns very quickly and just explain the situation.
Before you do, John, do you want to finish that last thought?
Well, no, that's basically what I, you know, and I'd just like to have it addressed and have an idea of when this will be completed and why, if, why was the drainage filled in three weeks ago without something?
Glad you're here.
I think what I can do is provide a little insight and explanation to the process. So as part of the reconstruction of the road, which was, is planned, we have to remove the existing catch basin structures. That was done three weeks ago with the intention that the company would be in the following week to actually pulverize the road, regrade it, and then we will pave a new base. They weren't, so you're correct in that they were, there was soil brought in, but what they do first is they remove the actual catch basin structure, put a steel plate over the inlet to the catch basin, and then add about a foot to 18 inches of gravel back into it so that when the company comes in, they're actually gonna pulverize, which is very similar to anyone that's ever roadatiled a garden, but they're gonna pulverize the entire asphalt street, making a new aggregate base, which will then be reshaped, crowned, and corrected. And a lot of these drainage issues and things you're concerned about, the overall condition of the road, will be addressed at that point.
Okay.
The contractor, which we used for many, many years, unfortunately, has been dealing with a lot of the same issues that every other contractor and resident, and the weather over the last couple of weeks has just been, it's made scheduling incredibly difficult. And unfortunately, every time we get one of these deluge rain events, and it washes out the work they do, and they have to go back and redo the work they would do. So their schedule is significantly behind. They were actually hoping to be there last Thursday, and we know the weather that we've had.
Okay.
So that's the short answer to your question, that's the process.
And I understand that.
In order to do that, we have to take those catch basins out, and that's why you have this intermittent drainage issue right now, and once that's, you know, done.
And I understand that completely.
Okay.
You know, believe me, you know, I know, 'cause I worked in that type of field before, so, but the fact that there's a big depression right across from, well, it used to be Ernie Johnson, he passed away, that ranch, there's a big depression somewhere in there, but it's, you can't see it unless you hit it.
But it sounds like that's what's being addressed.
That'll be out of the process of the regrading.
Yeah, but as it goes now, I mean, you could probably go in there with some type of a pump, just pump that depression out and just fill it in with some gravel.
It sounds like the whole thing is, the whole streets being done.
Yeah, but in the interim, in the interim. I mean, I have a daughter who just acquired a brand-new vehicle, and her concern is, you know, she has to maneuver it. Now, if she just happens not to hit, you know, maneuver the vehicle right, well, she's talking the front end, you know, suspension, tires.
For the sake of time, why don't we just set up a time tomorrow morning, I'll meet you out there, and we can take a look at it.
Well, you guys, I mean, I'm very happy to do it, you know, sometime after 9:00, while I get home from, you know, driving the bus.
Yeah, I'm sure, 9:30.
But I think in the interim, at least, that should be addressed. I'm not that concerned about the water. I mean, I am, but that's not my main concern as much as.
But if John will meet you, then.
Yeah, let's see what the situation is.
Yeah, that sounds good, too.
We'll take care of it.
All right, well, thank you very much for your time.
I love when problems are solved. Anybody else for open forum?
Thank you.
Okay, then, do you want to do that?
Yeah, I'll start. So on our agenda for our action items, we'll start with action item 18. I'll ask that Rob Celberti, who's here, come up to the table, as well as John Haynes, who worked on the project as well.
John?
So this is discussion and possible vote on the SOAR connection agreement with JSC Holdings, Celberti Company. This is Rob Cerbelli. I will, and Rob got to know each other very well over the course of the last, what, three or four years, I guess now, since we started the project. I think everybody has a good understanding of what we're doing down on Route 18 with our SOAR project and our connection with the city of Brockton. Rob is the first piece of the puzzle. He owns the property that's on the Whitman Town Line of East Bridgewater and 18, and he's proposing a housing over a course of five years, I think it is, doing some apartments, some housing, as well as some condos down in that area to help in our department of what we're lacking, and that is affordable housing. So what I want to do is just, first of all, Rob, if you want to just give a brief background yourself and who you are and where you come from, and then I'd like, John, do a little discussion of what the agreement actually says and how we got to the agreement.
Sure. Rob Celberti, I am a developer, contractor, out of East Bridgewater, and, yeah, so we've, you know, I own approximately 70-plus acres in the Route 18 all the way to Winter Street, and there were several projects we proposed, but there's obviously a big need for affordable housing, and we had an opportunity here to partner up with this SOAR project, and we're proposing, it's a four-phase project. The first phase is townhouses, 80 townhouses, and again, 25% affordable, and then we're proposing 160 units of apartments, 25% affordable as well. So this is the first step in, you know, in this long process of getting this developed and approved.
Thanks. John, you want to jump in just where we're at?
Yeah, just a little bit of background. Again, you alluded to it, and we've been working with Rob now for the better part of three years towards an actual, and I continue, this is truly a partnership. This has a benefit, a private-public partnership. It's the sort of thing that you hear about on the news, you hear, you read about. This is truly what I would say is a beneficial private-public partnership for both the community, the applicant, and potentially, you know, long-term, the residents of East Bridgewater. And we've been working towards a development agreement with the key stakeholders along the corridor, and, you know, this is the, would be the first development agreement to take place, and honestly, the most important. This is the linchpin to the project. We've all worked on it intensively. I wouldn't begin to think about the number of hours we've all spent negotiating this and getting this to come to fruition, and I think between, you know, working with Rob, being able to utilize that to take, and, you know, that was a key piece of the project that we, when we submitted the project to the city of Brockton, to the idea of utilizing, you know, some of their wastewater flow, we were able to look at Rob's project and show them that. And, you know, that's good development, that's good development, that's the kind of development the area needs and wants to see, and I think that's very evident because, you know, the project that's being proposed is also a big reason behind why we were so successful in moving forward with Charlie, and Charlie was able to draft that application up for mass housing and development, and we received the $4 million Mass Works grant. So all of these things just really have, again, it's a partnership that's been developed in, you know, it's coney to keep using that word, but that's really, you know, the success of this is, you know, it has a benefit for all at the end, so.
Thanks, John. Yeah, so I think we've talked about it quite a bit over the course of the last couple of years since we've got this in place. So what we're looking for tonight is a signing of the contract with Rob from JSC Holdings, as well as the Board of Selectmen. Along with that, Rob has a contribution for his allotment, what he'll be getting for SOAR, and that comes with a amount of, you got the amount, the amount that, Rob, you must know.
I was gonna say, I bet he knows.
Yeah, it's.
$620.
$620, right.
Approximately.
Approximately, yeah, $620,000, and that will, again, give him the rights to roughly about $30,000, less than $30, 25, is what it was that we ended up.
Essentially, that's, the calculation of the flow factor worked very similarly to the existing downtown district we have, and how, and that's how it all has worked along with the, you know, obviously, the board functioning as the SOAR commissioner's oversee, and so there's an upfront fee for the, essentially, the allocation of the flow. And then, as Rob's development is built out in the different phases, the additional funds will, you know, proportionately be paid at that point, so, you know, 50%, the $620,000 or whatever it is that you're referring to, that's the actual, that's 50% of the total development agreement.
Yeah, so once we get the COs, then another 50% stew per each phase. I think in total, it's about 1.2 million.
Okay.
Along with that, we also, the town receives easements to run the pipe through Rob's, a portion of Rob's land, and on top of that, the town has been lucky to negotiate a ownership of the road coming in from 18, which people say, "What do you need that for?" Well, we've got over 30 acres of undeveloped land that we couldn't get to, and when I say "we," I mean the town of East Bridgewater, that now will be, potentially be able to do a number of things, and we'll be able to get to that from the purchase of that roadway. So you can see all the moving parts that we had to put together, so.
David?
No, I, you know, it's been a long time coming, and, you know, congratulations, everyone's been working on this for seven or eight hundred years. But it's great, it's, as Peter said, it's great for the town, it's going to, you know, bringing things that we need in East Bridgewater and to commit compliance, basically, with the government, so.
Great.
If you want to make a motion.
Ali, did you want to add anything?
No, just obviously, you know, John has mentioned the teamwork aspect of this, and that's exactly what it was, both town officials and private individuals to make this work along with the help from the state, along with the help from OCPC. So this was not a one-person show, it wasn't a two-person show, it was everybody pitching in, working to the benefit of both the town and the developers along Route 18.
Right.
Yeah, I will, make a motion to accept the agreement between JSC Holdings, Rob Cerbelli Company, and the town of East Bridgewater for the SOAR connection agreement on that property.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Just the next piece of this puzzle. It's great.
Yep, absolutely. So Rob, we'll, the board will sign it, and then we'll get a copy to you as well, I'm assuming, yeah? Do you have a question?
Do these microphones work? It's very hot, you can't back it.
The microphones are for the television.
Television, right.
We can, we can try to speak.
Bring it up a little bit higher.
Sure.
Oh, is the fan back, yeah?
I'm sure, between the air conditioning, yeah, and the fan.
Unfortunately, the condenser is behind.
Okay, yeah, the mics are just for the television, they're not for this room, but we'll try to speak louder. Is that better?
It's like the wish.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, and now just one other, we're gonna do number 10. All right, Peter.
Yes, so the second item that we're moving up this evening is the OPER update, so I guess I'll ask John Shea, as well as John Haynes can sit there, right there as well, and we'll.
No move.
Discuss a little bit about the Rec Department and their request. We also have John Maji and Dan Peaker, if they want to join us, they're from the OPER Committee regarding the funds for those opers and what we, or what the Rec Department's requesting we do in order to finish the project on Church Street.
Do you want to start with the Church Street project, or you want to do an OPER update first?
Just do the Church Street first.
Okay. So the Rec Committee has, well, as you probably know, the basketball courts down on Church Street became unplayable. The cracks in the courts just spread out, and it's a dangerous situation, or it was a dangerous situation down there, and the kids in town don't really have a place to play basketball outdoors. So the Rec Committee, you know, I don't know, three, four years ago, we've been working on trying to figure out a way to bring back the basketball courts to the town of East Bridgewater. So we were lucky enough to get a state earmark of $55,000, we got a capital article in fiscal year '23 for $40,000, and we were also able to get an operating budget for $20,000 for the Recreation Committee. So with that $115,000 of funding, we were able to redo the basketball courts down there. We put, we're working closely with John Haynes and the DPW, we were able to repave it, buy new basketball hoops, paint it, put lines on the courts, they look great. The other item that we were using these funds for were to put surveillance cameras down there, which the company was there today installing.
Great.
What we've presented to the OPER Committee was for additional work to be done down at Church Street. So next to the basketball courts, there was an old hockey rink. It became, it became in disrepair, I mean, it was unsafe, the boards were, it was surrounded by boards.
Very attractive nuisance.
So what we're asking for the OPER Committee is funding to fix that old hockey rink and turn it into four pickleball courts.
There you go.
So we're asking for, from OPER, $146,000, I didn't bring my sheet.
$694.
$694. That will cover the seal coating of the courts, the painting of the courts, the pickleball nets installation, lighting, fencing, landscaping, additional chain link fencing, benches. So we have enough money for the surveillance cameras to be put down there, but we don't have enough funding to broadcast it to the police station, so that $146,000 will also pay for a fiber line to be dug and entrenched to the concession stand down there.
The remaining request is really to complete the project.
Correct.
To see this come to fruition, we've talked about it for a long time now, and to really bring that area of the complex to a state that's not only, not just playable, but it's an area that, you know, people will identify with as recreational space for the town.
Right, not just kids.
Correct.
Pickleball, some of our older members enjoy pickleball.
Yeah. Can we put an ambulance down there for all time for the elderly, just a couple of bones here and there go by?
The chief has said he needs more runs, what we've.
Well, and there's gonna be, and the camera, I mean, and not to make light of it, 'cause the cameras, I think, are a critical component of anything like this that we do nowadays, but if you fall, they'll see it.
They'll hear it.
Another component will be the lighting, which will extend the usage of the court surfaces significantly. I don't think there are any public courts in the immediate South Shore that have, that are lit.
Lighting.
So that will extend the opportunity for play as well, both on the basketball courts and the pickleball courts.
Okay.
Yeah, no, my question just, I guess, would be to John and to Dan, you know, I know the OPER Committee's done quite a bit of work, you know, we are moving a little bit quicker than we would normally in something like this. I think we weren't even set to talk about some of these items until after the summer, but seeing how we have the company in hand now and the project's got some momentum, you know how these things work.
Nice to get it done.
You shut something down.
If we let them go, they're not coming back.
Right, right, so I guess I just, my question would be to them, that they've reviewed it and that they're on board, and they feel comfortable with that.
Yes?
Yes.
Great. David, anything?
No, let's get going.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to grant the $146,000.
$146,694.
As Mr. Shea said, to the recreational apartment for the completion of the Church Street recreational area.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, there you go. All right.
Thank you, folks, appreciate all the work you put into this.
Thank you.
My back, thanks, Jim.
Carol, Carol, there are two appointments.
Yeah, we're gonna do those now.
Yep, all right, thank you.
All right, we will now move, we do have, could you say something, too? I'm hearing things.
No, pointing.
Okay. We have a citation.
Oh, yeah, I didn't see.
You're not chairman anymore.
No, no, I was just looking for where, I'm like, where are we?
No one told him.
That's why you're over there, the chief's here. Joanne Grammaccio, Joanne, are you here?
I'm here.
Come on down. You're the next contestant.
Here or up there?
You can sit right there if you want to, but it was brought to our attention that you've been doing a lot of work in picking up rubbish and helping to make our town look better, and so we have a certificate of appreciation for you.
Could you explain exactly what you've been doing? The road is so filthy, and on my way home from work, it just, it really bothered me, there's so much trash on the sides of the road. So I started back in February after work, I'd start on certain streets and I'd pick up the trash. Well, to date, I have picked up 86 bags, and I have also did the island at the end of Walnut Street and Union Street, 'cause it was disgusting looking, so I put in some flowers there, some, you know, mulch, brought, made it look really, really nice. So my goal was to do 65 for my 65th birthday. Well, I'm already at 86, and I'm already 65, so I'm gonna keep going, but it just, it needed it, it just, it's so filthy, the way people just throw the trash out, and I have a dog that I walk all the time, 'cause I live on Union Street, so I do all the streets there, and, I mean, I went all the way to Whitman, done a lot of streets, and she would try to eat the garbage, and I just said, "You know what? I used to pick up just around my neighborhood, but then I ventured out to 106, Spring Street, Washington, unbelievable, 86 bags." And I still continue to pick up as it's trash day in the area, wherever I'm walking, I pick it up and I throw it in somebody's trash barrel, I figured, hey, you know, but.
Don't get caught.
Oh, oh, that's okay, you know what, most of the people are like, "So thankful, like, thank God you did that," but it's disgusting.
So many people see a problem and then, you know, they want somebody else to fix it, but you saw a problem and you decided to do what you could to fix it and help, and I think that's.
I have the little grab-it thing, I've gone through two already, and, yeah, so whatever cans I find, I just stick it, cash them in, and I use it to buy the bags, but one time the DPW came down and brought me a bag, a bunch of bags, which was nice, but, I'm gonna continue, though, I'm gonna continue, but right now, it's too hot, I'll wait till a bit later, yeah, yeah.
Maybe you could start a group with me once a week, so you can cover the rest.
No, I like to, you know, it's funny, when you guys had that.
It was Cleanup Day, or?
Cleanup Day, I'm like, what are they gonna clean up? I picked up like 10 bags already, like, what are they gonna pick up? I'm thinking there probably wasn't that many people out there, and of course, I was working that day, so I couldn't.
Right.
Yeah, no, I'm gonna continue.
Plus, the first way to see nothing get done is to have a committee, am I right?
I know.
Take a committee now, you gotta coordinate with them, this way you can do your thing when you want to do it.
I just like doing it myself, I even did it in the.
And maybe you'll inspire somebody else to get out there and.
Yeah, I'm hoping, I'm hoping, but I do pick up the trash, and it was funny, my grandkids live in East Bridgewater, and one day when I did Washington Street, there must have been 12 bags on the street, and they're driving down the street with their mother, and they said, "Oh, look, Nene's been here, all the trash bags."
That's great.
There she is, she's been, Nene's been here, I'm like, "Yep." But I have had a lot of people that stopped to thank me, you know, and I just do it out of the kindness of my heart, 'cause I just.
Wonderful.
And I'll continue.
So this certificate of appreciation is on behalf of the citizens of the town of East Bridgewater, the Select Board would like to extend their sincere appreciation to you, Joanne Grammaccio, for unselfishly giving of her time, energy, and willingness to help beautify the town by picking up trash and litter along the roadsides in addition to taking care of the adopted island on the corner of Walnut Street and Union Street. Please accept our sincere gratitude for your generosity, we know that you will continue to be a concerned, active member of this community. They did this.
fifth day of July. This is not the fifth day of July, but we were on it. Twenty-twenty-three, attested to by Kathleen Kavanaugh, interim town clerk, Carol Julius Chair, David Cheedy Vice Chair, and Peter Spigot Jr. Clerk. So, thank you so much.
We need to sign this still.
Oh, okay.
But I want to shake your hand.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
And if you get any trash up.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yep. Absolutely.
If I didn't change my clothes, it was going to be a picture. Which makes it even better.
Right.
Thank you very, very much.
All my crazy coworkers will say, I believe it, she did it.
Do you want a picture with us a lot?
Did you want a picture with us, or just?
Might be the blues.
Here, I'll hold the blues. My coworkers are going to say, oh, I would think it would be Joanne, because I don't stop. I mean, I'm sixty-five, and I still keep going. Do you want to come up close on it?
I can take one, too. I'll take one for us. If it doesn't come out, email me, and I'll send you a picture. We got new chairs.
Oh, no, thank Rebecca for that.
I was only bitching for three years.
Going to miss that one that can go up and down. All right, and Chris Buckley, are you here? A veterans agent is here to give an update on the veteran banners.
How is everybody?
We're well, how are you?
Good, sir. All right. With a lot of work with the patriotic committee and a lot of our different veterans and their families in town, we've put this together. Main things are, we're keeping the cost low for our veterans who are sponsoring the event. So, how this works, and just to give you guys a lowdown of how the other towns do it, each banner is individually sponsored by either an organization or family. So, we'll be putting thirty banners up the next, I would say, somewhere between mid-September and October to get them up for our Veterans Day Parade. And the banners are going to run roughly a hundred dollars. Like I said, we put out a lot of quotes. There's a lot of local companies that do it for a lot, for a lot more. So, we're working with the same company that the town of Middleborough worked with, and so we're going to have the veterans face on both sides, as opposed of a message on one side. So, this way, the family and everyone in town can see the veteran coming every which way. We're going to run these first banners through the center of town. So, we're over on, so here by the common, and then straight across the intersection, and then as we get more every year, we'll add to it and spider out from there. But the applications will be, will be online tomorrow on the website, and then I also have copies that I can either email out or I have in the office. And this way, the only other thing we need other than the application is a photo of the veteran. But like I said, it's something we've been working towards, and there's been a lot of good input from the town, so I definitely wanted to give an update on everything.
I'm so happy. I mentioned this to you, I think, right after we hired you, I said, we need to do that. I was driving through Bridgewater one day, and I thought, why don't we have that, you know? So, I'm really glad to see this happening. Please, please send me an application, because I have a veteran I would like to do.
Definitely. And one more thing, we will be.
Wonderful.
We're going to run it, probably take them down around December first after Thanksgiving, and then for, after the winter, probably sometime between Patriots' Day and before Memorial Day, we'll put them up and then run them all year, because they are, like I said, they will, they will wear. But talking to other towns that have them up, that's best case scenario, so that's what we'll set up. And then in March, we'll, whoever doesn't get in on this first bunch, we'll go ahead and do another order in March.
I imagine after these go up, that will probably raise awareness of them, and then more people will want to, will want to do it as well. Great.
David, anything?
No, again, Chris, we've talked about this since you came on board also, and as everything else in town, you know, takes some time, but you stuck with it, and thank God. Okay, Peter, is that covered?
You got me.
Okay.
Absolutely. Someone in the back had to hand up.
Does anybody have a local veteran?
Oh, thank you for asking. So, stipulations on this, a lot of towns are different, and this is what we're going to go with for the first bunch. If we have to make arrangements, we will. If they lived in East Bridgewater, if they lived and passed away in East Bridgewater, if they went to high school in East Bridgewater, then went to the military, you know, any, any sort of thing, we're not, it's not, you got to be here for five years, or you have to be a lifelong resident. Really keeping it as open as possible, because we want to show off as many veterans as possible. The closer or the tighter criteria we have, the less banners we're putting up, and what we want is more banners rather than less.
That's great.
So.
And will you be able to use, because I know we put up a lot of banners for the bicentennial, will you be able to use that same hardware that's already in place?
Yes, the same, the same bracket system.
That's great.
And what we're going to be doing is setting it up to where the veteran just pays for the banner, not the bracket.
Great.
Because we either have enough, or we're going to get separate funding that's going to take care of that, that's not going to fall on the veteran to sponsor it.
Excellent. Great, thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, that's great. I really appreciate it.
Chris, you have one more announcement to make.
Oh, yes, I do. All right, so, as we've seen, there's a lot of plastic adding up around here, and this got started by one of my coworkers that just made a call one day and inquired about something. And she inquired to the national level of this organization, of this veterans organization, of the DAV. And National thought it was such a great idea that they pushed it down to the regional office and said, hey, come up with something. So, then Rebecca started getting some calls, I started getting some calls from all over. We were getting them from North of the Pike, we were getting them from the Cape. Hey, what do we do with all these bottle caps? So, I was like, what do you mean, what do we do with all these bottle caps? Well, you guys are the collection point. Like, no, 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 you guys are the collection point. So, we played this back and forth, and so I made a few calls one day, and sure enough, because Rebecca called and asked, National pushed it down to the regional guy and said, make it happen. So, we have a certificate here of appreciation for.
Chris, you may want to explain what all this is.
I'm going to. I'm going to. So, I have, I asked for a certificate for Rebecca Johnson. So, the reason we have all these plastic bottle caps is because the DAV has partnered with third-party organizations to recycle them and make.
Prosthetics.
Prosthetics for veterans in need. So, I mean, that's, and as you guys can see, the town has responded, and many of regions have responded. I believe I'll have a couple of carloads the next regional meeting in the DAV to drop off, and just because somebody here asked a question, so.
And these are the clear bottle caps. So, for instance, a soda cap is not going to work.
So, yeah, so off of water bottles, like the one Peter's got. And David.
So, are you still collecting them?
We'll be collecting them through the end of the year, correct?
Yeah, we put the end of the year, just to have a deadline. Okay.
Why would we stop?
There's a box right outside.
I didn't know if it's on the program. When I was picking up the trash, taking the covers off and giving them to my friend who lives in Whitman, and I know, I know.
Great. So, you have a.
Yeah, I have a certificate.
Certificate for Rebecca.
For Rebecca.
I love it when we can surprise her, because it doesn't happen very often. Who'd you get to type it if Rebecca didn't do it?
I know, I'm like, how did she do that?
I got elves.
It looked familiar in the paper.
So, if somebody would read the proclamation?
I will. Do you want me to read it, or do you want? All right, this is a certificate of appreciation on behalf of the veterans of the town of East Bridgewater. The select board and veterans agent would like to extend their sincere appreciation to Rebecca Johnson for organizing the DAV Disabled American Veterans Bottle Cap Drive to help provide, create wounded soldiers with the proper prosthetics. Please accept our sincere gratitude for your efforts, dated this seventeenth day of July, twenty-twenty-three. Christopher Buckley, VSO, attest Kathleen Kavanaugh, interim clerk, Carol Julius Chair, David Cheedy Vice Chair, Peter Spigot Jr. Clerk. Thank you, Rebecca.
Question I know I've asked, I don't know if we've ever received an answer, do we know how many of these bottle caps it takes to get a prosthetic for?
That we don't, but we will, we'll be getting an answer by the end of the program.
Imagine it's a lot, a lot.
Is there any reason why we wouldn't continue it beyond the end of the year?
No, we just, it was one of those things, you know.
Yeah, let's see how it goes.
Yeah, see how it goes, and it's going pretty well.
Yeah, it's going fantastic.
Thank you. Thank you. I wasn't expecting that at all. You have to get the rest of those signatures yourself. Okay.
Going to walk around.
Okay, I think we're ready to go to our action items. Thank you all for your patience. I know it's a long time to sit and listen to us.
All right, back to action items.
Mr. Clerk.
Discussion and vote at a four-way stop sign for the intersection of West Union, Union, North Central, Central Street, currently flashing light.
Okay, is there anybody here that wanted to speak about this? No? Well, I'm asking John. I know, so this had come up. I had a resident in town that had emailed me and asked about this with concerns. Cappuccino is right there, you have, you know, kids, and there's been, I think, some close calls there. And then I got in touch with John Haynes, and you already had a plan in place. Do you want to just explain to us? I mean, I think we all know what a four-way stop is, but.
So, this is a, this is a project that we've been looking at since early two thousand twenty-one. The idea of changing what is now a two-way stop with the throughway of Central Street onto North Central Street and turning it into a four-way or an all-way stop. We approached Old Colony Planning Council, as we typically do, to do the kind of an initial assessment, what's referred to as a warrant analysis, and it has to go through a process, and it's reviewed to see if it meets certain criteria that warrant changing, you know, the traffic control measures of the intersection. Old Colony Planning Council study came back that it did, and beyond, and from that point, one of the concerns that we did have, particularly myself and, you know, the police department and some others here, was a concern that by turning the four-way stop, turning the current intersection traffic controls into a four-way stop would be the idea that traffic was going to queue back up into Route Eighteen at certain parts of the day. Obviously, that would have a negative effect on already a very congested intersection. And I think you're all familiar with sort of what I'm talking about. So, from that area, it would be essentially if you were headed westbound out of town, if all that traffic, that westbound traffic from the center had to stop, how would that impact the traffic, the signalized traffic intersection of the center? So, Old Colony Planning Council felt that, you know, it wouldn't have a detrimental impact, but we wanted to, I guess, boots and suspenders to make sure. So, we entered into an agreement with an area, entered a traffic engineering firm, GPI, who we've used on other projects, the latest actually being when we converted Belmont Street and Summer Street into a four-way stop for essentially similar ideas. And we looked at a number of different alternatives to how to address some of these concerns, and we have some challenges in that intersection to begin with. There's obviously line of sight, the approximate distance of the actual right-of-way, what the town owns, what we can do within that right-of-way. We have on-street packing, we have things like that, but we also know we have, you know, very, very, very limited downtown packing anyway, so the idea of eliminating street packing really isn't a favorable idea. As we try to, you know, work towards developing a commercial downtown, you don't have parking, it's hard to attract. So, with that, the general, you know, analysis and discussion was, we should move forward with this approach to transition to a, to make it a four-way stop. The hope being, and I think Chief Jenkins can probably maybe speak to it better than I, but the type of accidents that we have there seem to be primarily issues with traffic that stopped at West Union Street, trying to make it through the intersection and having, you know, I'm not sure, we, like, getting T-boned. You know, essentially, that, and I think it's particularly bad, I think we would say it's that westbound traffic, as West Union Street traffic tries to either get out into the intersection or move through to go to Bedford Street. And I think that's where we see the majority of the incidents is there. So, hope being that, you know, as has been successful with other intersections, is all waste stop. And, you know, we would utilize a, the flashing, the reflect, the rapid reflective stop signs like we put at other intersections, as well as there's currently the overhead beacon light that flashes caution for east-westbound traffic on Central Street. We would convert that to a flashing red, so it would be flashing red on all four sides.
When they were doing these studies, John, did they have any concerns about traffic up on Route Eighteen? Because when you look at that traffic from starting at like three-thirty to five o'clock, it's all the way back up, you know, a half mile up the street. Would this create, do they think, any more traffic getting back there?
There didn't, there didn't seem to be any immediate impact, or that it would create a queuing up of traffic up into that area. Again, the major traffic flow is obviously the Central Street, and that was the primary concern, was how was that going to queue up? You'll actually notice if you come, if you were to go eastbound through there on North Central Street, now, traffic's already queued up at that intersection for quite a ways. I don't think this will make the situation worse by any means. I think this could, can only make it a safer intersection. I'm not going to say it may not take us all longer to get through it.
Mile to get used to it, yeah.
And to get through it. But the hope is that it makes it safer. I wouldn't go as far to say it's going to make it accident-free or whatnot, but the hope would be it's a relatively low-cost alternative to an attempt to make the intersection safer.
That was my next question. What is the cost of this intersection being switched over?
Our general estimate would be in the fifteen to twenty thousand dollar cost range, depending on the type of stop sign signalization we put in there, the, even though they're solar-powered and whatnot, don't require direct, they're relatively, they're not inexpensive. They're somewhere between five thousand and, you know, seven thousand dollars to install. So, we'll need to decide whether or not we want flashing at all four, if we only wanted to install two on the new part, on the new stops. Hopefully, my hope is that we can just retrofit the existing overhead beacon, and we don't need to change that beacon. If we have to change that beacon out, obviously, that would have a significant cost to it. I'm hoping we can really just change the lens, you know, from an orange to a red lens. It seems that simple to me.
Red plastic right over there.
It seems that simple to me, but, you know, undoubtedly, it's not that simple.
Peter?
No, I think, yes, I mean, anyone that goes to town cleaners has heard the story quite a few times, so. And as you both have, I've spoke to John on occasion regarding that as well, so it'd be nice to see something, because it is a dangerous corner. I'm sure Chief will say the same thing. It's, you know, it's people flying through there to try to get up to Skinner's.
John, you said it exactly the way it's been, and that's usually, looking back at all the accidents, we went back sometime, and that's mostly what it is.
Yeah.
People coming that way.
Yep.
Our daughter was actually in an accident right there.
Right there, yeah.
Well, there, you know, you're trying, you're trying to edge forward, you've got parked cars, you know, all around, so hopefully this, I don't know, we see it, we drive through Whitman, right, and you have those four-way intersections in Whitman, and everybody is so polite, and they all just look, and everybody nods, and then they go one at a time. So, East Bridgewater, we need to rise to this occasion.
We'll take an adjustment period, I'm sure. We'll take an adjustment period, I'm sure.
And, and there is, there's actually a, a procedure we have to follow. There's a four-to-six-week procedure. Message boards, making people aware.
Yeah.
Where actually the, the stop lights, stop signs will go up, they'll be bagged for a period of time.
We'll monitor it.
Exactly, there's a process. It won't be that tomorrow we put two stop signs.
And Chief, you're on board with this?
Oh, yeah, John and I had a great discussion today about it.
Okay. Charlie, did you need to?
Obviously, the board received a number of comments, pro and con, for this change. One thing we did get from the school of performing arts, they'd like to see some pylons or of something at that corner. I guess supposedly they've had two cars drive in to that building in fairly recent times. They're trying to protect pedestrians, they're trying to protect students from that happening. I have to assume they're coming around the curve on Central Street and then running into the building.
I believe in, in Chief, I believe...
Those were both diverted, like cars that were hit and they were sent in that direction, similar to with the Bridge Street.
Right.
We've spoken about this a little bit. The initial hesitation or challenge to the pylons or Jersey barriers or things that were requested was that's an ADA, there's two ADA handicap ramps that converge on that corner. So that would make that very challenging to, to block that corner. And also, again, a Jersey barrier-style thing would create an even greater obstruction for vision. So I'd really like to see how, let's, let's see what happens if we can actually stop the traffic and slow it right down to a stop.
Yep.
And, you know, and then see if we need to escalate.
As Carol said, it works in Whitman, so it works down at Summer and Belmont. I don't think we've had any problems down there since those were put up.
Ma'am, did you want to add something?
I just, I just wanted to say thank you for doing this. Because I live on West Union Street. You know how I go to the library? I go across, cross, down, El, onto 18 and take a right because it's so dangerous.
Yeah, I don't blame you for going that way. Thank you for speaking up. All right, want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make it.
I'm sorry, hold, hold that, yes, ma'am.
I have a question about that intersection, about those stop signs. Will there be any kind of signage before they get to the intersection to warn them that they need to stop ahead or anything, just because people aren't used to it, but people don't pay attention to that?
There, again, there is a process that'll make people aware of that there, that it's, will be a stop. We'll look at possibly installation of, of stop ahead, perhaps on the eastbound side of North Central Street. If you were to look here, if you're familiar with it, the corner where Batty's Auto Body Shop is, we may try to do something right there with a, with a stop ahead. There's not a lot of real estate on the, on the downtown Central Street side to do too much more traffic.
Okay.
Because they don't pay attention to the stop signs on Bridge Street, so they pull right through.
Unfortunately, yeah, unfortunately, it's an attempt unless we have some way to put stop strips across intersections or something.
You can solve the problem of Belmont Summer though. I mean, the people, the transition went pretty smooth and like you said, it rectified the problem as well.
Right, okay. Did anybody else want to comment on this before we, we're ready to make a motion?
I am. I'll make a motion to implement a four-way stop designed for the intersection of West Union, Union, North Central and Central Street.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Funding.
I'm not making that motion.
Hey, that's your problem.
We'll get back to you on that.
See the guy over there in the tie?
John doesn't like me.
Talk to him.
We're gonna have to have some discussion about.
Okay.
I'm great at coming up with solutions, but...
Us too.
I, I may, John, remember at Town Meeting, the Finance Committee had reduced a number of budgets, including probably the one that John would try and use funding from to do this project and possibly some of the others that are being brought up tonight. I think we're gonna have to take another look. These are so, you know, they're important to the town, but they're relatively small. They're not ones where we can easily get state grants for. There may be a couple of possibilities, but if we don't have internal funding right now, it may be something that unfortunately we'll have to wait until this fall, bring articles to Town Meeting to get the necessary funding for this.
That's, that's not that far away, so...
I know, but, you know, I, it's sort of like when we're dealing with the acceptance of the streets and people think the next day that...
Tomorrow.
Who's gonna be off their pay.
Want that done tomorrow.
I hate to be that person, but...
No, we understand that, well, we, we will vote in favor, but then the funding mechanism will be worked out and then, and then you can do the job. Anything else? All right, hearing no further discussion, all in favor? Bye. You might want to stay. Okay, now we're going to do, have our discussion on the guardrail request for 575 Pond Street. I see the owners are here. How do you, how?
Well, I would just take it.
Okay, so we know why you guys want it.
They made the original request, so I think they would go first.
So if you want to just summarize that and then we'll ask anybody that's here to speak one way or the other, to just take turns doing that.
And just to, so that the audience realizes that would, as with stop signs, the board received a number of comments from various individuals. They're all on the record, the board has copies of those. We're not going to read every single one of them during the meeting.
Are they on the, if people go to our agenda, are those, were those part of the scanned agenda items?
No.
Okay. But they could request them from our office.
If you could just state your name and address that you come forward to.
Yep, so I'm Paula Butts and I live at 575 Pond Street. Hi, John. So a few years back, we had requested to put in a guardrail along the length of one side of our property, just due to some severe accidents that have gone through there. And June 10th was our most recent accident. And this time, car came down around the corner, hit the same telephone pole that it tends to hit. Hit the telephone pole, kind of tried to correct itself and then they tried to correct themselves and ended up airborne through the other side of our property, all the way across our field and into the woods on the very opposite side of the property. So, so we're very concerned about not only our safety, but eventually someone's going to get killed there. Just because there, there's, this is at least a third or fourth time that this has happened, the same exact scenario. And if this had happened five days prior to that, we were having a graduation party in that field. So this scenario would have been very different. So we're very concerned, like I said, not only about our own safety, but eventually someone's going to end up getting killed there. So we're requesting that we can relook at the guardrail, see if we can do something.
Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, I was, yeah, so that, all right. Other people that wanted to speak on this? Nope? Okay.
I mean, obviously, as the board, as I said to the board, there are a number of, I think there were a number of people who wrote with other suggestions. I think people were asking about the possibility of dangerous curve signs or flashing dangerous curve signs, lowering the speed limit for some section of Pond Street. And the question, and I think John and Michael have probably looked at this, is, you know, when we're looking at the causes of the accidents, what might prevent these people who are causing the accidents from not, from those accidents not happening? So for instance, if we have inebiated drivers, which we've had, would they pay attention to signage? There are also concerns, you know, and I went out there myself this afternoon. There's a shoulder along the road, but it's on the south side of Pond Street, on the house side, that's maybe a foot and a foot and a half wide. What happens is that there's a severe drop-off, relatively speaking, maybe six or eight feet after that. So putting a guardrail farther away from...
We're not talking about that side of the yard, Charlie.
Pardon?
We're not talking about that side of the yard. That's not where the accidents are happening.
Okay, well, I can, if you take your time, I'll closer to your house.
John knows exactly where we're talking about. In that photo, it would be to the left of the red dock.
Over here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you're talking about...
Because I heard that the, that the car went in the woods.
Yeah.
Right, so it went off the road.
Yeah.
Where it says Pond Street there, to the further left, right there.
Yeah.
It went across the driveway, hit the telephone pole and went down into that lower yard. Went all the way into the tree line, taking out a pair of trees.
So basically, they kept going down the curve and went straight rather than following the curve?
Exactly.
Okay.
John, do you have any insight into this?
So guardrails aren't typically something that, that DPW just puts in. They're, they're not a traffic control measure that we would arbitrarily install. I, I can't recall, I think the last place that we actually installed guardrail, I think guardrail install was along Elm Street at that severe bank. So typically, this would be something that would come, you know, a request like this would come before the board. And I don't actually, I mean, I know this was before the board, I think, in...
2018.
That was in 18?
Yeah.
And I know there were several factors that came to the board's attention at that point and there was a decision not to move forward. I don't know what predicated that or, you know, the rationale for that at that point.
Okay. David, do you have ideas?
I've been up that property probably three or four times in the last couple of weeks. What I want to preface this very...
Here, one thing, you may want to speak up for the...
Might be a very little idea that people don't speed on that road, because they do. But right at the beginning of Pond Street, on Washington Street, it's a 35 miles an hour. First thing first, I think we have to get that down to 25 miles an hour. I believe that is under the...
It's thickly settled and I don't know, I didn't check on how many houses we have in that stretch. We could, is permissible?
I, I believe it is thickly settled, well, let's go on that premise. And one of the problems that I have had, I've mentioned this before, with, with guardrails is there's very little area on Pond Street to walk to begin with. If we put barriers there, then we're gonna, at least right now, they can, they're walking on people's property, but at least they have a place to walk. If we put a barrier close to the street, you know, people are just gonna be walking in the street all the time. Flashing curve ahead, dangerous curve, I don't know if we can use dangerous curve, but flashing curve ahead right after the bridge, okay? Going that way and opposite coming back the other way. They're coming, this is back there, you've got the same curve up at the other end.
Right by where the well is.
I think, again, there's no solution, as Charlie said, there's no solution to impaired drivers. There's nothing we can do that's going to change that. I think flashing signs, even with an impaired, maybe will wake them up. I'm not too sure, especially looking at that last accident, how it managed to get all the way through there without stopping to begin with. But we have to take everything into consideration. I understand that the Butts property, I understand that, but a guardrail there is now going to create another problem with people now being on a street of a very...
To your point, I think what the, if the town were to perceive with that, we'd obviously need to establish what the actual right-of-way layout is for Pond Street. Again, with most of these old country roads, we do not have engineered plans as far as right-of-way. We know that we have a deeded 40-foot right-of-way for Pond Street, but as I've explained, hundreds of peoples over, over the years, that paved surface can fall anywhere within that 40 feet. So it would really take engineering to determine where the, where the edge of the town's right-of-way would be. A lot of times, we use general rules of thumbs, fire hydrants, telephone poles, things like that. They're always on the town's right-of-way, they're set within the town's right-of-way. I would think, I do think you're, what you identified about the, the need to have somewhat shoulder available on the, on the side of the road, I would be very concerned about. Again, trying to look at it from a multimodal standpoint of how is the road utilized, bicyclists, pedestrians and tra, and vehicle traffic. We need to think about allowing for, for as much shoulder through that section or way as possible. So if guardrail were to continue to be a consideration, I think we'd obviously want to be looking at setting the guardrail back as far off the, the shoulder of the road as possible. For two points, the other thing a guardrail does is that if you make contact with the guardrail, the intent is to either keep you in the lane or keep you from coming off the lane, which has a tendency on a curve to put you into the other lane, which then could create a head-on collision, which would equally be...
And again, if, based on what you're saying, as far as where this property line is, when you look at the telephone pole in front of Mrs. Butts' house, I mean, that's almost right on the concrete, I don't know how much. And again, if you have to put it too far back, it's not going to accomplish anything anyhow because they're gonna, you know, be in trouble a long time before that. I don't know if you people have checked Pond Street recently, but it's one scary street.
I go that way to, I stopped actually going that way to work. I used to go that way to work, but I stopped.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, and this is just, every road has become...
Sure.
Very fast and very busy, very congested.
Yep.
Not that, you know, significant insurance don't exist, but I think every resonant, every street, you know, if you are on Union Street, if you are on Crescent Street, if you are on Pond Street, the, the advent of things like ways and, you know, different methods of cut-throughs and such, there are no quiet streets any longer. Just when we, when we think about, no, is one street scarier than the other?
I, I live on a very Anna Drive. I mean, we have problems there with speeding people taking a corner on two wheels. So it's, but I, I do, I just think something there, something flashing is, is going to get people's attention. With a guardrail, it's too late.
Peter?
Yes, so I guess my only question would be like, what I like to look at is like, we don't have to recreate the whale here, right? I mean, this has got to be happening in other towns, cities, whatever it may be. So do we have a county or state department like OCPC or any other groups that may have dealt with this in other areas that say, hey, we found that doing this in that type of area would be better off than doing that? Have there been other groups? I mean, I don't have a problem calling Mary Walden from OCPC and asking her as well, but, you know, there's, we can't be, like, again, we can't be the only ones that have a Pond Street or, or, you know, some of the other Anna Drive, other areas that have, you know, some concerns. And if we could find somebody that's dealt with it and dealt with it in a way that we can look back, like we just talked about with, with Winter and Belmont, is it, was it, where did they put in the four-way stop?
Summer and Belmont.
Summer, but, so thank you. You know, we, we found the results already and we know, hey, look at that, could be a great solution. And this point, I would say, you know, I mean, me and you together having discussions with so many different organizations, we may be able to find something sooner than later that would give us better information on what, what's being done in other areas. Like I said, it's, you know, one's no better than the other potentially, but if we at least have some results from some other areas, other towns, like I said, maybe that gives us a better path to take and gives the residents some, some better options than us just saying, yeah, let's, let's throw in a guardrail and see if that works. Or let's, you know, put up a flashing sign, see if that works. So again, like I said, I don't have, myself or Charlie has a very good relationship with Mary as well. I don't have a, a problem reaching out to them and seeing what they have to offer in that, in that direction. And then, you know, maybe that's a way to curb some of the, some of the question marks that go around.
Yeah, we could utilize, again, you know, the, the engineering, the, the traffic consulting firms to take a look at these different locations or whatnot as well. Obviously, it's nice to utilize Old Colony Planning for, for a number of reasons, but first being that, you know, there's no fee.
Yeah, right.
That's the best part.
Well, I think what I'm hearing from the two of you and, and you and Charlie as well is that a guardrail isn't going to solve the problem that we have. And I know that's not what you want to hear and I'm sorry that that's, but I, I feel like there are other, let me just finish and then, that there may be more to this than just, oh, let's put in a guardrail and it will solve the problem because it could create new problems. It could not solve this problem because it's a curve. And I'm hearing, you know, what David's saying about reducing the speed limit, which I think would be something we should be able to do. Can we, we can reduce it in a, we just can't go above what the guidelines are for thickly settled, right? But we can make it lower?
Well, it got complicated.
Okay.
I mean, it used to be that, you know, thickly settled automatically was a certain speed limit. Then the state, what was the last couple of years, reduced, said you can do it across town or you can do it on an individual street. or you can do it on an individual street by street basis to reduce it to that twenty-five. You still need to meet the criteria, and John and I can take another look at that.
Okay.
And does, you know, to make, you know, and bring it back to, if it's permissible, given the criteria, we can bring it back to the board.
I'd like to see it.
We have to look at the density, I think the density of housing in the, along those sections.
Yeah, certain quarter-mile number of houses.
And then the possibility of signage with regards to dangerous curve of-
Yeah, that doesn't require, yeah, that doesn't require any, I mean-
Right now, there isn't anything that says that, correct?
Well, there is. So that, the last time we requested the guardrail, that's what was put up, it was a curve sign.
Curve.
So it's something.
So that didn't work.
Okay, is that what you, was that the point you were gonna make?
No.
Okay, please.
My point would be that there are other ways to address this, right? It doesn't have to be a guardrail.
Right.
Right, I could get boulders the size of Volkswagen cars to stack them along the road, right? But the next time somebody goes off the road, they'll give it a boulder and they will die. I'm telling you, somebody's gonna get very seriously hurt here. And you all heard that, and you all know that this has happened again and again. And, no, I mean, you're aware of it as well.
Oh, yeah, and I think the speed reduction was a great, you know, recommendation. I think that would help.
But I don't think that-
But looking up the accidents, most of them have been impaired. I mean, there's not much, I mean, my officers out there, we write, I write traffic grants. I have two guys out doing speed enforcement every day based on a grant we got from the, we try to enforce the speed, so we put them in the bad areas. And I looked up the accidents, they've been impaired drivers. And most of the cases, it's someone texting or they're impaired, whether it's drugs or alcohol. And the accident, the most recent one, that's what it was. There was one a few years back, was it, it was alcohol, same thing. So I looked at the accidents and a lot of it's coming down to, it is a dangerous curve and speed reduction would help, but, you know, it's impaired drivers, which, you know, we can-
Right.
We can only do so much about that.
They're not probably likely to follow a little speed sign.
My guys are pretty proactive when it comes to traffic. They're very proactive in that sense.
Yeah.
I think they're attentive. They wrote four hundred and seventy-eight tickets, wasn't they? We do, and that's all, and that doesn't cost the town a dime. It's all through federal grants. We're pretty proactive with the traffic enforcement, especially in those troubled areas.
Put a couple of speed bumps in there, maybe that'll slow them down.
Yeah, you can't put speed bumps on the normal ways.
Those affordable ones that they have, and, yeah. And I understand, and I don't think anybody's trying to dismiss this and say it's not a problem. We understand what you're saying and that it is a problem. I'm just not sure that this is the right decision to make right now. And I think that we do need to look further into what the other options are. But I would like to say at least, you know, when we get the information to lower, that we can lower that speed limit and maybe put in some kind of flashing sign that says speed reduction and a curve and whatever. Just, you know, I don't wanna ignore what you're saying right now. I'm just not getting the impression that we're on board with going ahead with a guardrail at this time either.
I think we need to determine the-
I'm sorry.
Layout of the road is important. We need to-
Right.
Before we do any permanent installation of anything, I think it's important that we look at, try to establish if we can, as feasibly as we can, the actual road layout. You know, I'm looking at this aerial shot and I know, you know, perhaps if we would remove some more of that vegetation along the water, that would open that corner up so people might see. You know, if we were to look at removing some of that, that might open that, so your line of sight's a little bit better. That can have, that can have an alternative effect, though. Now, it's more open, you tend to go faster.
Right.
So I, my major significant concern is thinking of it from a multimodal transportation. Yeah, I think we need to be cognizant of not only the vehicular traffic and the impact on the road, we need to be, think about the people that are riding their bicycles and walking through that area. And it is thickly settled and it does, and there is no sidewalk. And I'll be, there is not gonna be a sidewalk on that section of roadway. That, it would almost be a sidewalk to nowhere because it doesn't connect. It's not as though it's a piece of segmented sidewalk that's missing. There's no sidewalk on Washington Street, there's no sidewalk on Hudson Street. There's no sidewalk in, I think that turns into Elm Street in Halifax. So it's not as though that's gonna be a place where we can get priority funding for grant to create a pedestrian or whatnot. The actual road width is very narrow. The shoulder width is narrow, so trying to add sidewalk means, you know, it's not just the four and a half feet of the sidewalk. Typically, it's eight to ten feet of road you're taking. I think we really need to just, whatever is decided, we need to think from a multimodal standpoint and allow for, to accommodate all those different means of, all those different users and get a sense of where the actual edge of the town's property is. And then look at, where do you go forward from that to?
John, I think that's really important, but at the same time, I'm, if I were to just sit back and listen to this conversation, I would hear that people are, don't have room to walk on the street. And people don't walk in the yard right today. They don't ride their bikes on the grass, they don't walk on the grass. So if the guardrail were a foot and a half, two feet, three feet off the street, it wouldn't change what's happening on the street today. I'm just throwing that out there because people aren't on the grass when they're walking. They're not riding their bike along, they're on the street.
No, I think, I think-
And if the guardrail was pushed back a little bit, then that, so I guess I'm just having a hard time. But I think I just wanna be clear that-
Yeah, the process, what I'm thinking about is people will walk on the asphalt surface as much as they can.
Yeah.
But when a vehicle's coming, they certainly want to be able to shift over. And now, if we've erected a physical barrier on the shoulder of the road, they no longer have that option. And that, that's, when I looked at the situation, that's the concern that comes to my mind. You know, I have kids that ride bikes, I have a wife who walks her dog all over town, you know? Those are the things that are considerations in my head. Okay, yeah, most of the time, if there's no traffic coming, obviously, I'm gonna walk on, you know, on the paved surface. But I want to be able to step off unobstructed. In the event that there's a car coming at me at thirty-five, forty miles an hour, I wanna be able to veer my bike off or push my stroller or whatnot.
Right.
Off that surface.
And last thing I'll say is that at the last meeting that we were here, I think he had asked us if we would be willing to put in, onto our property, and he said yes. So just don't let him hear that.
That's, that's still there.
Yeah.
That's a possibility if we ever get the layout of the land.
If it is, then that, I think it would have to be, right? So I think the general consensus I'm getting is we're gonna kick this back to you and you and you. Try to get more information and more possibilities rather than vote tonight on this.
Yeah.
You good with that?
Yeah, like I said, I think there's-
I'm sorry, that's-
Can we make a motion to, if we do determine it's thickly settled, the motion would be to change that from thirty-five to twenty-five? We don't have to wait for another meet to do that?
I'm thinking, trying to remember my experiences in Halifax, whether we change speed limits. There's no requirement for a public hearing or anything, but I remember-
Lower the speed limit, can we just?
A couple of years ago, a town meeting, the town voted to allow this law to reduce the speed limit to twenty-five.
And it doesn't require a warrant analysis, right? We don't have to do a traffic study?
Not, because it's thickly settled, if we were dealing with the difference-
If it meets the definition of thickly settled, we can change.
Yes.
And thickly settled is like twenty-five?
Yeah.
And so you post it thickly settled?
I ended up doing a hybrid in Halifax because thickly settled doesn't mean anything to anybody. I mean, it's on the driver's license text. And then twenty years later, people don't even know what it means. We, I did, ended up with a hybrid. It was a weird sign that said thickly settled citing the general law and then the actual speed limit.
Cause I, thickly settled is an advisory, so if you think about it, it's a yellow sign.
Right, so that you're aware.
It's advisory. And then a white sign, a lot of people, is a regulatory forcible sign. So we could do, approach it thickly settled and then do twenty-five miles an hour or whatnot to get that speed control.
Would you like to make a motion that if Charlie finds that the regulations allow for it, he can go ahead and do that?
Okay.
All of a sudden, you can, you-
Do we, does, do we have the leeway to, because we'll have to define the scope of thickly settled?
Right.
You know, are we gonna post, essentially, are we gonna post from Wampanoagway to-
We should make the whole town twenty-five miles an hour, every side street.
My feeling is really, like I said earlier, I mean, I think you could look into that for sure. And, you know, we, but I mean, I'd really like to look at a couple of, I mean, again, I can't, we can't be the only town-
Right.
That has thickly settled or, you know, congested roads or roads that have turns that haven't approached this on, right?
But it wasn't that long ago, we made Union Street twenty-five.
So, I mean, let's make, I mean, again, like I said, I mean, I'll make my first phone call and then we just go from there, and I'm sure we can find-
Something that a lot of communities do is they actually have a traffic study board, like they have a traffic advisory board that's made up of representatives from the police department, the public works, a citizen at large. And when concerns like this are brought-
It's a working group.
It's a working group. And they, you know, they work through this and they, they look at it from all the, and they can come back and present a rational, you know, proposal to the-
Right. I think that's a good idea.
And that's something that we may wanna think about, cause we get requests all the time about, can you put this sign up? Can you exclude the traffic from here? And that really, as the roads continue to become more and more congested and, you know, we do have this interface of what I keep talking about is multimodal transportation. We really need to, it's no longer as simple as saying, well, we're thinking about this from how we drive down the street. We really need to start to think about these decisions from how is a street used? And have different people on it and then look at that from some different perspectives. I look at it as like, how do I get down the street and pass? No. The police department looks at it, how do they enforce the traffic regulations? But, you know, it's not till you're a user sometimes of the actual, you might look at it differently. If you ride your bike a lot, you may look at things differently. So that's the avenue that a lot of communities are taking. And that advisory working group makes a recommendation.
And I think that's a great idea because, yes, we all live in town and we drive the roads, but you sound, you know, we're experts and, you know, we're a policy creation board. But to have a working group that can meet and, you know, do site visits and have the input from the police chief and the fire chief and residents who are pedestrians and bicycle riders, I think that makes a lot of sense, so.
Looking to that, I would still like to continue the motion that-
But David has, do you wanna make a motion?
I tried.
Well, I wasn't sure if you were making it or suggesting.
I'm making a motion that if we determine that this is a thickly settled, that we reduce the speed on, on street to twenty-five mile an hour, as we did on Union Street not that long ago.
And you wanna put that at the discretion of the director of DPW to where those signs would go?
Yes.
Okay.
We can replace the thirty-five with the twenty-five.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. It's a start, yes.
So can we put some dates around these things? So how long will it take to figure out the right-of-way question that John raised about how wide the road is and stuff like that? Couple days, couple months, how long's it take?
I'm guessing more than a couple days.
I would think, let's say, you know, September first.
Six weeks.
At that point, we'll know where my property line ends and where the town's right-of-way begins.
We hope we would.
That would be the goal.
A lot will depend on what plans actually exist.
Yes.
We don't have the engineering dollars to go out there and resurvey the road. However, if people have come in with anything like a wetlands permit or even built some building permits, if there are any boundary plans either at the registry of deeds or upstairs in the building office, all those can contribute to some knowledge as to where the right-of-way exists. But we don't know whether those things, those documents are in existence right now. So we have to do the research, look them up and see what we've got.
So the next follow-up on that would be September first? That you would have some progress?
On the boundary lines, yeah, I would, I agree with John.
Okay. So at that point, we might know where the boundary line is, right, between the city town's right-of-way and the property line. So at that point, I could put out my own guardrail, right?
I mean, if you get a permit on your own property-
You don't need a permit for a fence. But-
Don't need a permit for a fence?
I could put up a fence, I could put up a rail, I could put boulder, I could do whatever I want.
On your own property, as long as you, yeah.
That's all we're trying to get to, is, we don't have a problem, we talked about that at the last meeting, of moving the guardrail onto my yard. I don't have a problem with any of that.
Right.
It's just, it's a safety issue and-
Doesn't matter what the town does or doesn't do. My neighbor put boulders on the whole front of their property after my husband got hit by a car off on it.
Right.
Yes.
I think the speed reduction would be a great help. I mean, I know you can act, you know, you're gonna look into that, but I think that would be one step in the right direction as well. Twenty-five does, you know, some areas where it is twenty-five, they do actually slow it down a little bit. We could pick up enforcement out of the area, but that would be a great step in the right direction just to reduce the speed to twenty-five. Whether it be from Wampanoag up to Hudson or whatever, I think that would be a good stretch that area.
So what should we do when there's egregious speeding on that street? What do we do?
You can call the station. What we have, we have, we take a list, we take calls all week long. We compile a list, we put it out to the guys that are doing speed enforcement. They try and hit all the areas when they can. They do four-hour shifts usually on speed enforcement. And I try to put, you know, where we get the most, you know, we try to have them monitor four ways and certain areas for speeding, but I'll gladly step up to speed enforcement in that area over the next few weeks as well, just to get an idea of how fast they're going as well. So we have more information on that. You know, I do have a speed enforcement grant that I can utilize to September fifteenth and I'll gladly put them up there and we can get a better idea of how fast they really are going as well. But I think speed reduction to twenty-five would be a great step in the right direction.
Just, we can't encourage people to put boulders in the right, along the right-of-way. It's actually, there is a-
No, but on their own property, they-
There is a thing called, the MUTCD is the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. And boulders are specifically prohibited. But again, if they put them, if they put them, yeah, if you put them on your own property, we just can't stop people thinking they can put boulders on, given the right-of-way.
Right, right. So make sure that whatever you do is-
That's why I wanted to know when that right-of-way would be known, right, September first.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you. Okay, moving right along.
Thank you very much.
We're gonna have a discussion and vote on the guardrail request for seven eighty-eight Bridge Street.
You stay here, John.
Don't move.
Leon, as which we're due to seven eighty-eight Bridge Street.
Since our last meeting here, I've had a few more accidents in front of the property. One was on July eighth around four-thirty PM. Car rolled over. Had one yesterday afternoon at twelve-ten. Car come up, no car hit it. The other car wound up in the southwest corner across from my house. People will wonder if I'm running the OK my blue light special. I guess I may blue light in front of the house lately. I realize that we can't fit a car on every corner. You heard these people just leave speaking about boulders. I've had boulders in front of my house since I moved there in nineteen ninety-seven. I had one a few years ago, a gentleman hit the boulder, hydroplaned, wound up. And he wound up, a few years later, he committed suicide. Boulders will shop here for a while, they ain't gonna solve the problem. We can't fit a car on every corner either. And as the chief said last month, they wrote four hundred and seventy-eight tickets in town east of Bridgewater here. So you know they're doing their job. What can we do to prevent it? Nobody knows really. The only thing that saved it from going in my property again yesterday was the sidewalk. The car hit the sidewalk and that was the end of it. We've gotta do something in locations. As you had mentioned, some of the location you go on, you have trouble on approaches. I don't know if you'll be able to talk to the others in the phone company. The telephone pole is one hundred feet apart. Whether they will allow you to put blinking light on a pole wandering these intersections, I don't know. But I've had boulders there as a sense, since ninety-seven. Mr. Spagon, in the test, his relatives lived in the house, I bought it from them. It's been a chronic problem within the area for many years. We ain't gonna solve it overnight, but hopefully the guardrail will.
Okay.
We've been lucky, yesterday afternoon, the traffic wasn't heavy there. When that car spun out, it could've took an old car head-on. It could've been worse. I've been to many of the fumes, I don't wanna go on a fume of what in my house for one who knows. I'm asking you people to do whatever possible to resolve the problem there. I've had the opportunity- I've had the opportunity to speak with Mary Wall in this afternoon around four-thirty. Actually, want to know how things were progressing, I said we have a meeting here tonight. To put a traffic light in every location here, if you run it properly, a billion, a billion and a half dollars to erect them properly. Town can't afford it. We've got to do something. I've asked for your help and we'd like to see what we can do. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
All right. Before I ask you, is there anybody here that wanted to address this action item on the, the guardrail to Bridge Street? Yes.
It's just last week, my husband and I were heading.
Can we just.
On one-oh-six.
Could you just. I just need, you just need your name for the record.
Marilyn Smollett.
Okay.
Numerous times we've had close calls, but just last week, we were heading east on one-oh-six and a white landscaping truck came flying down from where the dump was, went right through the intersection, just missed us. We probably would have been seriously injured or killed. He was doing about forty, went right across, never stopped, coming from the dump. So there's two rises in the road, there's one on one-oh-six and there's one by the dump, and I don't think people that are familiar, not familiar with those roads, probably don't even see the stop signs until they get over the, well, there is a one-oh-one-oh-six, they don't see the intersection. And on, coming from the dump, I don't think a lot of people see that stop sign, they're going too fast by the time they see it. It's just a really dangerous intersection. We're afraid to go through it sometimes, and after what happened last week, it's even worse.
I go that way every day on my way to work. And I don't want to go the other way anymore, I never seem to have to retire.
One of the things we suggested, if you could possibly talk to the Edison, the phone company, as I said, the telephone poles are a hundred feet apart. If you approach coming from Bridge Street, the old dump, going towards Peter Spagon's house, I believe you lived down there? I used to.
Oh, that, my, my parents used to live on South Street around that one, yeah.
If you could approach a hundred to two-hundred feet before they hit the intersection. People don't realize what they're coming to do. Down by Ralph Litchfield, where the pallet company was, there's a telephone pole there. If you get a gesture light coming down there, dangerous intersection, drop a wire down, tie it in. That would give the people coming south the opportunity. If you're coming from the old AR park, it's two-hundred feet back, drop one there, same thing. Coming up Bridge Street towards Roland Hills, up there by your father-in-law's empty lot, there's telephone pole there, you could drop in, put a warning light there. Then you're coming in the intersection. Mr. Haynes had picked the blinking light up there. What had happened yesterday, there was a party down the street. The people had the party and they did the parking. So the person coming up from Bridge Street couldn't see the stop sign. By the time the police arrived, they moved the car anyways. So if you had fifty foot back, no parking from the stop sign too, might help. But there's no easy solution to this corner.
No.
Believe me.
And it's different than the other ones, so.
Yeah. It used to be an old cow pasture, that's what it was.
I do, I, I think the circumstances are slightly different here. Again, looking at things from a multimodal, the usage. I think the fact that there is an existing sidewalk here in place already, that erecting a guardrail behind the sidewalk, it's approximately fifty-four feet, I, I've scaled it out from Mr. Litchfield's driveway up to the radius of around the backside of the sidewalk. I think a, a guardrail could be appropriate there. I think there's also is opportunity for, I don't know that we have the option of partnering with the utility company to utilize the telephone poles. They have, they have pretty significant restrictions.
They're a little proprietary about those.
But I do think there may be opportunity for some advanced warning signage, particularly on Route one-oh-six, Plymouth Street, as you come up, as you approach the intersection. Perhaps even again utilizing the, the RFD, the rapid flashing. Solar powered lights. Particularly, I think, the, I think the westbound approach is the most significant because it does have that line of sight. Where you kind of lose the intersection and come down over it if we were able to saw something there to make people aware, try to make people more aware of the intersection. We did install the blinking stop signs on both sides of Bridge Street. We're gonna be doing some work with, again, with opening up. Unrelated, but I think it may have a benefit at the old recycling, at the old landfill, to clear that vegetation for a new fence, I think that will open up some of the line of sight through that area as you approach, as you come down from Bridge Street, it's just gonna, when we eliminate the vegetation and make it wider, you'll, you'll see the signage better. And so I, I do think this, in this circumstance, I, I think the circumstances are different. As each intersection is whatnot and.
And another thing I did there, when I had the new driveway put in, I went with a circle or two. Just cut down some of the traffic out of my house.
Right, right. Okay.
So we all got to work together.
Again, I, I wish we had answers. Chief, what have, what have you seen? Now, that entire intersection, obviously it's had a number of accidents, again, looking up at Pond Street, most of those were, you know, people were driving under the influence. What are you finding on a bridge?
Not this intersection, it's a bad intersection. I mean, total light career. Twenty-plus years of damage. Even pulling out, I mean, I, I think it's, trying to get out across from Bridge Street, it's, it's bad. I mean, you've got to, because they're coming over that hill real fast, coming from Halifax, Plymouth, that way as well. I sat there and monitored today for quite some time, a little bit in the, the last few days, just looking at it. The cars, they speed to that area as well, they don't stop at the stop sign. So I think any, you know, everything John had mentioned would be very helpful. I think this is definitely a different scenario than Pond Street. Pond Street, I looked up those accidents, those dump rates were all amegated or impaired for the, for the major accidents. There's two major accidents happened on Pond Street. This is definitely has to do with the speeding and the stop signs, it's not apparent. I have the texting involved as well. I think it's a very dangerous intersection and I think.
Flashing intersection ahead?
I think even, you know, John made, you know, clearing the vegetation coming from the dump area that way would help. I think the flashing signs and the guardrail, I think they're all great recommendations because something has to be done in that area because.
Just to give you an idea, not to interrupt the chief. But that's your police reports for the calls, for the accidents.
From what, what period in time is that?
The last three, four or five years. This is also.
I was afraid you were gonna say the last six months.
This is also the study that was given to you people in November of last year by the Old Colony Planning Council. So I've done a little research on it and, as I said, I think the chief was proud when I told him he wrote four-hundred-and-seventy-eight tickets last month.
Somebody's keeping tabs on you.
We're going out with traffic enforcement, but like you said, you can't have a cop on every corner and they do their best to be where they can. And I try to put them in the, you know, the high, you know, accident areas or the, the bad intersections as much as possible.
And unfortunately, I mean, I, I think the speed limit is, you know, it's forty, forty-five miles an hour, that's Route one-oh-six. That's, that's not a.
We can't.
It's not unreasonable to say the traffic is gonna, and people that are unfamiliar or the line of sight, when they come over that crest at forty-five miles an hour, the braking distance is, you know, forget the calculations of what it works out to, but I mean, you just, you just really don't have a chance. If you're headed westbound and there's a, there's a car that's decided to, to take a left, particularly on the Bridge Street, your reaction time is, is kind of minimal, even if you're paying.
We changed that to twenty-five miles an hour.
We can't make it to the one-oh-six.
That would be tough, you couldn't do that.
And if you look at the, the stop sign on Bridge Street, it's backed about forty feet. So when you're coming up to the stop sign, you're stopping long before the crosswalk.
Yes.
So you're not actually, you're looking up to the left, south, see what's coming around that bend.
Yes.
And believe me, they all slow down.
Oh. And when they take it a right, they pull up so that you can't see the right, you're trying to take a left. Because it's one-oh-six, we're pretty limited in terms of.
John, is that ours though?
Yes, Route one, right, correct. Route eighteen is under state jurisdiction, Route one-oh-six is a locally owned.
So technically, yes, if it met the criteria of thickly settled, you could lower it. But on a practical basis, I mean, you're, are you, you know, a certain number of feet away from the intersection, could you lower it? Yes, but then you're, you're, talk about traffic enforcement, it's gonna be forty or whatever it is up to three-hundred feet away from the intersection. And for three-hundred feet, it's twenty-five, then it goes back up again and.
You'd have a very similar situation to all of us that grew up driving in this area of Route eighteen, in Bridgewater.
Yeah.
You know, and you, and you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, I can remember the old Bridgewater Police Department van would always sit.
Right there.
Oh, yeah.
At the bottom of the hill and, because it went, it, suddenly it was twenty-five miles an hour.
But we can do things with dangerous intersection signs or things like that.
I think if we can try to increase awareness of the intersection.
Right.
In long-term, I mean, we don't have the money for this right now, but OCPC in essence said this could be a traffic light intersection, given the traffic.
But that would involve a complete redesign because Bridge Street doesn't come out.
As I said, it, it's a heavy amount of money.
Yeah.
And also, I, I think as much as the actual intersection itself is the approach.
Yeah.
You're talking about a very significant infrastructure to cut the, that rise.
Right.
And that's what you would need to do, because you need to really address the line of sight issue.
Yeah.
It's, if everybody, if it was a long straight shot, you'd see it was an intersection and you'd be able to see that car that was
Right.
turning or pulling out. The alignment is, is not good, but I really feel it's that, that law, that, the approach, as you come down, you, you're you're kind of blinded to the, the fact that the intersection's there, particularly if you're not familiar with the area or you're unfortunately distracted.
But I'm hearing that you are in favor of the guardrail.
I think in this circumstance, I think the guardrail would certainly address.
Protect you. Yeah.
If I could just say something, I think this is a certain intersection that Chief Windsor's son or daughter or someone was killed on years and years ago.
It was his daughter, but I didn't.
I thought it might have been there. I will say that my wife and I, Diane and I, we bike right along there a lot. And it is difficult to go right by there. Sometimes we take Bridge Street down by the Smollett, sometimes we go straight down to the Latham. Anything you could do would be helpful.
Thank you. You, you want to add anything?
No, I mean, I think we've been in the same, yeah, same, same boat with the street. We've been there a couple times, it's, you know, it's probably one of the better areas for, for guardrail to, you know.
I think you used to swim in the swimming pool.
I did, I did, I had the glove down there. So, yeah, I would make a motion to, at least on, on the guardrail request, approve the guardrail for seven-eighty-eight Bridge Street area.
Second.
Any further discussion? I'll ask, what money?
I just think flashing lights would be very helpful. Well, I mean, the guardrails can prevent, but it's not gonna slow people down, it's gonna prevent people from going onto the property, which definitely, I agree with John on that. But I think the flashing, some type of flashing signage would be very helpful and slow them down as well.
Some sort of advanced warning.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get.
I live on Meadowbrook Drive and I can see Bridge from where my property is, I'm at the end of Meadowbrook Drive. And they fly on that section.
You can hear them going by.
You can hear them. It's like, I don't know how many people have gone off the road there in the winter time because of the snow. They go off on the ditch on the Marilyn side of the road. And they fly right there, so if you could put a warning sign there, it would be helpful, I think, because it would slow them down before they get up there.
And if they're not texting, they'll see you.
If they're not texting.
Unfortunately. Are inabriated.
Signage is only signage.
It's he from us, from what I see.
Something.
The Bridge Street where the issues are.
Yeah.
Not the opposite way, it's not one-oh-six is the issue because you would expect to go.
It's crossing, it's crossing.
Well, it's the Bridge Street traffic trying to get either onto Plymouth Street or across Bridge Street.
And as Carol said, it's not lined up either, so that makes it even twice as worse, you gotta kind of cut it.
And the biggest problem, when you come down from the old dump, you got no warning, if you're not familiar with the area.
Can't see.
And if we're piling on, it doesn't help when people have the windows tinted so dark that you can't make eye contact with them and know, I see you, do you see me? Because I, I deal with that all the time.
My officers have the tinted, that one of the first things I got was all tinted.
Yeah.
God, left and right, the legal tint.
Because you can't, if you can't know that that person has seen you. Anyway, do you want to amend your motion to give John some leeway in terms of warning signal signs?
Yeah, I mean, on top of the guardrail, if we could, we can certainly add warning, flashing warning signs for, I would assume both sides of Bridge would be the, are you talking one-oh, Plymouth as well?
Bridge Street, Plymouth.
Bridge, right?
Bridge and Plymouth?
Stop, perhaps, you know, more signage, stop, stop ahead on Bridge Streets on both sides.
Yeah.
And something to make drivers aware on the approach to the intersection when they're headed westerly.
From here.
Of the intersection.
Yeah, because it wouldn't be a stop there, so would it be just?
Dangerous intersection, intersection ahead, intersection ahead, something along that.
I'm sure you can carve your way through the path of finding it. Yeah, that, that would be the motion.
Second.
Okay. Now, is there any further discussion? Everybody good? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I hope that helps. I hope that helps.
Time will tell.
It's a, you know, yeah, you're right, time will tell. But, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thanks for your patience, everybody, I know that was a long.
I won't, wrote my first tuition check today, so.
That at eighteen, you can't read that after.
A few years to go.
Okay.
Keep going.
You're the star of the show.
Yeah, action item four, I believe it's.
Yeah, we're on four.
Really moving along here.
Ready.
Discussion and vote on proposed heavy commercial vehicle exclusion for Cottage Street.
Is this Charlie?
So we had gotten in residents who had been complaining about the amount of trucks that use Cottage Street as a bypass of the East Street Bedford Street intersection. Where one-oh-six and eighteen combine to go north a little bit and separate it out again. For a heavy commercial vehicle exclusion, you have to do a traffic study, which has been done by OCPC. They confirm that there's sufficient traffic along Cottage Street that if the town wanted to do a heavy commercial vehicle exclusion, it could. The, we have to provide an alternate route, which is obvious, so that trucks going on west on East Street would just have to go all the way to the intersection, turn left, or those on Bedford Street would have to go all the way to the intersection and turn right.
Okay.
I believe the threshold for an exclusion of heavy vehicles is seven percent. And the Cottage Street was actually fourteen percent of the traffic on Cottage Street of heavy commercial vehicles. Again, I feel as though it's, these, a lot of the truck drivers, we deal with, I utilize them every day, but they use these ways and, and things
Yeah.
of, of how to get places and.
Because obviously it is quicker, I mean, there's no question about that.
And that is, you know, another difficult, dangerous intersection at eighteen and one-oh-six, so.
Absolutely.
Obviously, people are trying to avoid that.
Yeah. Okay.
So if we, if the board, if the board decided to do this, we'd have to put up a.
New signs.
It would be a gradual process. You have to put signs, you have to be able to warn people ahead of time, hi, you know, starting on such and such a date, the truck exclusion's going in, we have to work with Michael on traffic enforcement, you know, hand out warnings at the beginning before we start issuing tickets, things like that.
Okay. And this was a request of the residents of Cottage Street? Okay.
And I, I think I tried to mail something to everybody who lives on the street.
Yes.
We were thinking of doing this.
Okay.
I will bring it to the board's attention, I know that the town of Bridgewater is looking into the, I believe, East Street turns into Haywood Street.
Yeah.
They are looking at actually prohibiting truck traffic on Haywood Street. Which would then be, you know, we would have to prohibit it on East Street as well.
They just gotta do right, right around East Bridgewater.
Well, unfortunately, they want to do.
Where would they go?
Well, they want to do Haywood and High Street, which would put all of the traffic that's currently in, that's utilized in Bridgewater, on High Street, would go on to our Whitman Street and our Plymouth Street.
Oh, good.
Just, they are in the process of, of looking to do that, they're working with Old Colony Planning.
Okay.
They've approached me to participate in discussions. That is, that is the, what they would propose as an alternative truck route.
Which, which.
Well, we've had people from Whitman Street here already, didn't we?
This would be, in Bridgewater, it would be Haywood and Highland and High Street off of Route eighteen.
Okay, so here's. Okay, so here's High, here's High Street.
Right at the top of the aisle. As well, that they wanted no traffic on, no trucks on that one.
So, if you were to scroll south.
Okay.
So, right there. North a little bit more, right? I guess that New World.
Yeah, that's on.
Correct. So, on the easterly side, they would be looking to prohibit truck traffic.
And what, go up this street?
No, so really, see where Glasgow, that, that I believe is the intersection, it's a signalized intersection now, that's High Street where your pointer is.
Yeah.
Bridgewater's in discussions of actually prohibiting that, or making that a no commercial truck route.
Mm-hmm.
Which would force that traffic, which currently goes easterly, to remain on Route eighteen.
Mm-hmm.
Uh-huh.
Enter into East Bridgewater and utilize our Whitman Street to one oh six.
Oh.
As a, because they, they too would need to provide an alternative route. That's the only alternative route.
And because it's a state road, they'd only be.
Our alternative route is in another town, is what they're saying?
Well, you're prohibited from doing that, that's why they'd need to partner with the town of East Bridgewater.
Good luck.
That's why, years and years ago, if you remember the threats of, well, Brockton was going to make Thatcher Street one way.
Yes, yes.
They couldn't do that.
Yeah.
But, you know, it doesn't matter. But, so Bridgewater has had some preliminary discussions about how would the town feel? And it's, well, you're essentially, significant traffic increase.
Right.
On East Bridgewater is.
We've had, like I just said to the board, we've had residents on Whitman Street already discuss heavy traffic in there. I can imagine them saying, well, we're not going to limit it, plus, we're going to move all these other people over here.
East Street as well, they could plan.
East Street, yeah.
Yep, we have had requests about East Street, yep.
East Street, perhaps, is, having worked on East Street just last week, and stood there, East Street.
Trucks nonstop.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Really?
Nonstop.
That may be a valid, it's a valid concern.
Yeah.
And it does, it does meet the threshold to exceed the High Street, Bridgewater was a bit more of a concern.
You know, I'm going to Bridgewater Sand and gravel, they cut through that.
Yeah, that's what, that's what the request was about.
I was going to the dumps, maybe to the Thatcher Street area.
Truck runs, auto blocking, a lot of heavy traffic.
Okay.
So I'm assuming exclusion of heavy commercial vehicles would just be a ticketed situation if they did not abide by that rule and took their truck down that street. If they get pulled over, then it's fine, right? I mean, we're not going to have cameras out.
Commercial vehicle enforcement officer that does a great job.
Oh, yeah, I've seen him.
We have to focus on that area.
Yeah.
But it would add to congestion at other intersections.
Right.
Again, are we creating a bigger problem?
Well, that's what I'm, I mean, so I'm not pointing at John as the only person, but, you know, in the sense of, you're asking me, I mean, sure, you're going to create more traffic at one oh six eighteen intersection, there's no question about it. Thing is, is that a better intersection for that traffic to go through than to go along Cottage Street?
Oh, certainly, yeah.
Yeah.
And I would, yeah, this, my information I'm providing has no impact on what I think is a decision to exclude traffic from Cottage Street.
Okay, okay.
This is just something, as we think about.
What's going to happen?
We're encouraging traffic to now turn onto East Street, while there is discussion of prohibiting traffic on East Street as well, which focuses all this traffic to, to centralize.
Is there anyone here from Cottage Street?
So, six months from now, can we, can you get there from here?
Is there anyone from Cottage Street here?
I don't think so. Nobody's here from Cottage Street, right? No. All right, well, do you want to make a motion?
Hi, no, David can.
Oh.
I don't, I mean, I don't know where, I mean, so when was the study done with, from OCPC?
Old Colony Planning completed it.
Within the last couple of months.
Within the few, right, within, within the month.
Okay. And this would push traffic just further?
So just prohibit Cottage Street.
Right, I understand that, but they would.
It would push the traffic.
Essentially push it to East Street?
Their alternative route would be to take a turn, a right turn onto East Street.
Or go, if you're going west on East Street, you're going to then make the left-hand turn.
Any from E, anyone from East Street here?
You'll be here next week.
It's a very short section of.
Yeah, Cottage Street is, I mean, it's, it doesn't belong there, I agree.
Yeah. I think it's literally.
And I, and I agree, they don't necessarily need to be down that street, having driven down the street and knowing the area, but, you know, this is a domino effect, right? I mean.
They're avoiding the light.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, absolutely, yeah, no doubt.
I'll, yeah, I'll make a motion to propose that no heavy commercial vehicles, you know, on Cottage Street for, in East Bridgewater.
I mean, this would be.
I'll second.
A very interesting conversation to have with Old Colony Planning, because we're, there's more and more heavy.
Right.
Truck traffic on our roads.
Yep.
And all of us as individual residents are utilizing that more and more, and the infrastructure system isn't designed for it.
Right. Well, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? We can change this, right? I mean, if this is a disaster, we can, we can change it.
This action, I don't believe will have any.
But if there are repercussions from other things that then become difficult, that then make this untenable, we can go back and revisit it.
Well, and you may, as Travis pointed out, even forgetting about Bridgewater for the moment, you may end up with a conversation at some point about East and say, do we want to continue to allow truck traffic on East, or, but again, you'd be shunting it off onto Whitman and then to one oh six.
Right.
And then you have the same, you have different neighbors, the traffic's going someplace, it's really going to be, it's a question of which roads are better suited to handle the amount of traffic.
Right.
So we had a similar internal conversation a few years ago about the idea of excluding, of making East Street, excluding it to heavy vehicle traffic.
Yep.
But it would have meant that that traffic would then have to go to High Street.
Right.
Right.
And Bridgewater.
Right.
So.
So we didn't do it.
So now Bridgewater's looking at doing it to High Street, we can put it on East Street.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I agree that, that, you know, knowing Cottage Street, I mean, there's no reason for that street to be utilized for the, for the heavy traffic, and it's just a, it's a quick cut through, is all it is. So I don't have a problem with that.
I don't know how quick it is, honestly.
Just need to be cautious of, yeah. And how many trucks are going down there, really?
Yeah, I have an Uber as well.
Right.
Right, that's what I'm saying, yeah, it's not an easy street to get in and out of, right?
There's no way.
Yeah, yeah, I got you.
All right. No further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Great.
I think we might be done with you. Are we done with you?
We're up to wait.
I don't think there's anything else on here, is there Travis?
I'm looking. Oh, Strathmore is easy, it doesn't require John to be here.
The Rock Snake, do you want to weigh in on the Rock Snake?
I think the Rock's, I think that's a great idea.
I do, too.
I think it's super.
I don't see anything, no.
No.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
We appreciate your time, thanks. I know, right?
Longer.
Three times.
Yeah, this was longer than town meeting.
So, yeah, okay, all right, let's do this.
Yeah, approve the minutes of June twenty-first, twenty twenty-three Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approve the minutes of the July fifth, twenty twenty-three Board of Selectmen's Executive Session Meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approve but not release the minutes of the July fifth, twenty twenty-three Board of Selectmen's Executive Session Meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We passed.
We're going to do number nine in executive.
Yeah, how about eight?
Eight, passing over.
That's what I thought, yeah. All right, we did ten already. Eleven, discussion on the reserve fund transfer for the Board of Health to pay the third party.
And that's been handled by the Finance Committee. At one point, we were thinking we were going to do some sort of revolving fund, but the Finance Committee did approve the necessary reserve fund transfer. Basically, the situation is the Board of Health agent may be coming back but not be able to perform the, in the field duties, and they still need to have somebody out there and pay for that, so.
It's already taken care of, okay.
Line item transfers, Charlie?
It's the end of the year, these, I believe, as far as I know, Finance Committee approved all of them tonight, so the board, but the board's agreement is needed also.
And there is, was an additional one for the DPW that the Finance Committee did approve as well.
Is that under the action items? Is that under the action items, or is it?
One of the four you gave me? One of these ones?
It's for the payroll. They had an incorrect number for the payroll listed down here, so they just gave me a revised form.
Okay.
But I didn't have time to put it on the agenda.
Do you have the?
Yeah, it's thirty-sixty.
Oh, y'all are leaving?
We're going to the good side.
Had enough fun for one night?
You guys are killing us tonight.
They're leaving, I'm leaving.
Just to let you know, Town and Landry has an ordinance on specifically settled on leave because their house is signed every day, allowing specifically settled twenty-five miles an hour. So, look at that.
Thank you.
Good night.
Hey, Marilyn.
Good.
Can we just meet outside?
Well, eventually, yeah, when we're done.
I can just go outside. Okay, awesome, thank you. Thanks, guys.
Okay, back to you.
All right, so what, do we need, we need a?
Yes, we need approvals from the board tonight with the corrected amount of payroll for the.
Sixty-six fifty.
All right. All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the line items as printed.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion and vote on overtime policy?
So, we had had some concerns last fiscal year with overtime, where we had had departments who can't allow employees to have compensatory time. However, if compensatory time is not used, you have to pay overtime. The problem also was that they did not have the overtime money in their accounts to pay overtime, so then we had to go for a reserve fund transfer. What I'm indicating to the departments is you cannot have people work overtime with the assumption that you will, that they will take compensatory time. You need to make, if you're going to have people working overtime, you need to have money in your budget to fund that.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And so I need the board's approval on it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion as stated.
I'll second for discussion.
Yeah.
I've been around long, I just, I am so much against any type of compensatory time whatsoever.
Well, and I understand that, but it is in the union contract that allows for that?
It allows for that with the approval of.
The department head.
And the town administrator.
Right, we'd have to check again, but what, my point on this is that they cannot even, unless they've got the money in the budget to pay for the overtime, they can't have the employee work overtime, even if the employee says, I'll use it, I'll go compensatory. So, you can't, basically, unless you've got overtime money available, you can't do compensatory either.
Didn't we have, didn't we talk about this with the planning board, is this?
Yes, this is one of the departments.
This is the policy.
This is one of the departments.
This is the result of that discussion, right? Yeah.
Again, I, at your meetings, I think it has to be, you know, stressed, because I've had a conversation, actually, very loud conversations, about the compensatory, okay? You know, we have a meeting, you know, if it runs, then, you know, then you should have someone at the meeting that's taking the minutes after the meeting should have been over at eight o'clock. You shouldn't be keeping people because.
And that's what.
They're running for an hour.
And that's, and it's very specific in the policy. I've said in the policy that unless you've got the money available for the overtime, that if you've got someone who, let's say it's seven forty-five, you need them out the door of this building at eight o'clock. So they have, they're going to leave that meeting at seven forty-five, they're going to go to their office, they're going to put away everything, they're going to be out the door at eight. Where, you know, you're going to have somebody, whether it's between recording the meeting, taking notes at the meeting, whatever, someone on your board or committee, you're going to handle that situation after that person leaves.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I thought we talked.
And again, I just want to make sure that's emphasized, because I'm getting, I'm getting kickback from it. And then.
Kickback from the, one of the, from the departments?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, and, and if they've got, you know, they, and I've said, you can make the request for overtime in your budget, so.
But if we put this in place now and they haven't already done that.
And they will not, let's say it's eight o'clock tonight.
Are we paying you overtime now?
I'm not in the union.
Right.
Kidding.
So, let's say we, we had a union member here, I would have said to them at seven forty-five, you're going back up, wherever you have to do, go back to the office, you're closing down, you're out of here.
And when they, okay, so we're okay for this year, because they probably don't have any money in their budget.
Right.
Are they going to come to us and ask for it in the fall, are they going to ask for it in their budget?
They might.
Here. Here. So what we're doing here, I was, what it was putting off the net report that they're gonna go ahead and allow compensatory time at an hour and a half next year because they're gonna put it in their budget.
Only, but the budget still needs to be passed, and it's something that you all and myself can work with the Finance Committee and say, we, this is not a priority for the town.
I'm just trying to make sure that this doesn't say, hey, this is great now, but we really don't have anything established for next year, and I, I think next year is that overtime for compensatory should be a separate item.
Mm-hmm.
And that's how it has to be done.
And maybe by doing it now, then they'll figure out other ways to make it work without having to.
Oh, you can start, you can start meetings earlier for.
For overtime, yeah.
That was kind of mentioned on the second octave.
We should have started this meeting at 4 o'clock.
Yeah. Right. Were we on overtime, compensatory?
Yes.
All right, so.
All right, well, you seconded it.
I did.
Are you done discussing?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Motion is made and seconded and discussed. All in favor? Aye.
Acceptance of quintclaim deed for Stratham Road Extension?
Right, this is one of the streets that was accepted at town meeting, the Board needs to sign off on the paperwork for this.
Okay.
Move along. Um, I, Chris and Kenny had confirmed that it was on the agenda, was on my to-do list because it was a, a point where he said, has everything gotten done? And he had worked with Rebecca and made sure it had gone drawn up properly, reviewed by the developer's attorneys, and it's ready to be signed by the Board.
All right. So, motion?
Second.
Motion is made, seconded and any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approve the request from Angie Pohwani. Sounds right?
Yes.
EB resident to start a Rock Snake to join the community together along the trail near the bench that looks over the water.
So the snake has already begun?
Yep.
Yes.
I understand.
So it's at Seacham Rock. So what, what they did was they painted the head of the snake, and then kids can come along and kind of make the.
Keep buying it? Oh, cool. Yeah, I saw it, it looks pretty cool.
Yeah.
It's a good idea, yeah.
All right.
It's already started.
Second.
Any discussion?
Great idea.
I was, uh, just at a campground last week and they had a Rock Snake, and it was fun, and the kids really were like adding to it all week long, it was, it was pretty neat. It's a good community building thing. All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Vote to approve requests from Dean Lapine, East Bridgewater Community Guards, to hold their annual Harvest Festival at Seacham Rock Farm on August 26th, 2023, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, rain date, August 27th, 2023.
Second.
Uh, motion is made and seconded and any discussion? All in favor?
Has, um, the event coordinator been notified?
For the town comment? Wait, which one are we on?
No, we're on Seacham Rock.
The Community Guardians Harvest Festival at Seacham Rock.
Oh, no, I didn't notify her.
Okay.
There aren't any events at the, at the moment.
Okay, just let her know that, that you can't schedule any of that stuff.
Yeah, sure.
Thanks.
Because of parking?
Because of, you don't want two events down there.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approve to add the use of food trucks to the event permit from James Stoffel of the East Bridgewater Business Association for the use of the town common for EBBA Expo 2023 to highlight East Bridgewater businesses. Event will be on October 7th, 2023, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, set up October 6th, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We've already done 18, we move to 19, discussions of procedures under the town bylaw, offenses and penalties, section XIV Act relative to the granting or renewing of certain licenses and permits in cities and towns.
This could resolve, but just to, what it is, is that, this is, this is a section of the bylaws that says that the town can decide not to approve a permit or it can vote, whatever the licensing authority is, um, whether it's permits or whether licenses, whether it's revocation, whether it's non-renewal, or in fact, the original approval, if the taxes are not up to date. The, originally, but, um, it's probably more than 20 years ago, and this is true across the Commonwealth, it was built in for, that it was a year delay. Now, we had voted to do 30 days, and it seemed that there wasn't as much coordination between the building planning office and the treasure collector's offices I would have liked. Um, I think I've resolved that in terms of the mechanics here. We're gonna need to slightly revise the bylaw, um, because it simply says right now that , um, the treasure collector issues a list on an annual basis, along with, can do it periodically. What I'm saying also is upon request, which means anytime, what should happen is that when, whether it's Concom or the building office as an example, or Board of Health, when someone's coming in, they will check with the treasure collector's offices, one of their checkmarks, and make sure the taxes are up to date. There may be, like I said, a slight revision needed in the bylaw, we can handle that in the fall, but mechanically, it's in place now.
Okay.
Great, thank you. A discussion possible vote on whether to support 874, an act to modernize funding for the community media programming.
So, we have cable cutting, in that when all the original cable agreements were done decades ago and have continued to be done, the way we fund EB CAM and whether it's us here in East Bridgewater or other communities handling their public access, is that there's a stream of revenue from the cable company based on the revenues from cable. What of course has, have been happening is that the cable companies now have fewer subscribers. That's been balanced off to some extent by their rate increases. So, you may have fewer subscribers, but the dollars coming through are somewhat the same. It may be a slight, been in a slight decline, I noticed that in Halifax. What this legislation is saying is, in essence, is, we're no, cable revenues aside, if you have someone using the right-of-way, whether it's here, whether it's in Bridgewater, whether it's in Brockton, et cetera, whether it's Verizon, whether it's Comcast or Charter or whoever else is, has non-cable but streaming revenue coming through, that there'll be a surcharge on that revenue and that gets returned, to some extent, to the cities and towns for use for public access. Because the situation is that if the wire, the cord cutting continues, we're gonna see decreasing revenues available for EB CAM. It's, however, providing a service to all residents in East Bridgewater, even those who aren't subscribers to cable here in East Bridgewater, in that we have them recording meetings, we have them recording events, they do public access shows, which are then broadcast, not just on cable, but in streaming in essence on the internet. Um, the, so what we're trying to do is look at this long range and say, if we're losing this revenue stream to fund EB CAM here in East Bridgewater, but similar organizations in other communities, what revenue stream that would be appropriate should be funding EB CAM? And what they're saying is, the companies that are using the right-of-way, they install their equipment along the right-of-way, those revenues from streaming should then, a percentage of them, a surcharge should be devoted to funding continued public access in the communities in Massachusetts.
Okay.
Um, legislation's been proposed, I, it actually, I think it's like, has about 70 cosponsors, I don't know that they're gonna, anything's gonna happen this year. What I would say is, even if the, you know, to say to our legislators, even if the exact language that exists, and I already read into the sponsors to say, I see a few language problems involved here, but the general philosophy, the general idea of having a new revenue stream to provide funding for public access across Massachusetts needs to be in place because of the cord cutting. And if the Board wanted to send a letter saying, you know, the idea behind this legislation, we're in support, even if the language gets changed.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to support the 874 Act to modernize funding community media programming.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We've got four additional.
Some additional ones.
Yep. Uh, so, approve the Southeastern Regional Service Group DPW Supplies Contract Award Sheet commencing July 1st, 2023 for a 12-month period.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approve the request from Southeast Regional Service Group to award the contract to WB Mason for paper items for 12-month period commencing on July 1st, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approve the request from Southeastern Regional Service Group to award a contract to WB Mason for paper items for a 12-month period commencing on July 1st, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Didn't I just say this?
Also a 24-month.
It's 24 months on that one.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, okay, all right. Uh, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approve the request from Professional Bartending Services on a one-day liquor license for the center at Seacham Rock for a wedding reception on August 5th, 2023, from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM, pending acting police chief approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
This I got today, and I don't believe the chief has been able to have a chance to look at it, so.
Okay. So it's been approved, all right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Rebecca, announcements?
Um, no, not that I can.
Uh, no.
Charlie?
Um, just a, I wanted to talk to you about the digital equity project, this is happening across Massachusetts with the Massachusetts Broadband Institute, and we're working specifically, we're on a technical assistance grant with VHB, which is a consultant. Um, there are two aspects. One is there's a statewide survey that residents can complete, we have, can be done online, it can be done, we have paper copies here, but the idea is to ask residents, what are the barriers to them to being, be able to use the internet? And those are really in three areas. One, they may not have the equipment. Two, they may not have access to broadband or Wi-Fi. And three, they may not have the knowledge. Okay, fine, I'm connected, but what do I do next? Um, give you a specific example, when we had Compass close, you had residents who, I mean, the only way of trying to connect back up to your doctors or get more information was on the internet. Well, they may not have any of those things or not enough of those things to be able to do that. In fact, they were going to the library, they were going to the Council on Aging to work with staff there who were enormous help to assist them to get, try and get through that process. Um, this doesn't mean that you don't want the library and Council on Aging to not continue those things. In fact, those are places where, you know, we talk about knowledge, training can occur, but the survey tries to identify, um, the problems that East Bridgewater residents, obviously across the Commonwealth too, but we're interested in EB, have in doing this. Also, we're gonna be doing a workshop, um, on Tuesday, August 15th, at the Council on Aging, specifically to have a much broader discussion with residents and other interested parties about what their challenges are and what resources the town might have. Um, we publicized that on our website, on Facebook, we did a little PR on it, um, to send something out. Jessica Henderson, our library director, had notified our legislative delegation, I got in the survey, out to them and invited them in for the workshop on the 15th, so we're trying to do that. There's no action for the Board, but this is another vehicle to get the word out. Um, if anybody's interested, we have information on the website, we have information on our Facebook page. Um, if you have questions, by all means, call the Selectmen's Office.
Great. Is that it?
That's it.
Board discussions? David?
Yes, bicentennial.
Are we still doing that?
Dale and I are, in the, in the committee. A couple of things coming up, one is in a couple of weeks, the, um, the East Bridgewater Y is having a bicentennial baseball game and watch the game party. It's going to be, start at 2:00. The Red Sox game against San Francisco Giants will be, uh, broadcast down at the Y Gymnasium. They have a 14-foot screen, which I believe is nine feet tall and 14 feet wide, um, and we'll be serving, um, hot dogs and popcorn, we will be in bouncy, uh, things will be there, and a couple of other games for the kids. The Red Sox will be bringing, hopefully, a couple of their World Series trophies down so people can see those and have pictures taken with them. Mini Del Common from Red Sox pitcher will be there, um, so we're looking forward to that. And following that, on August 12th, the Y will be having a family day from 11 to 1:00 outside, where they'll be having games and face painting and a whole bunch of other things for families. And, um, that one I know is, uh, over 200 families have already signed up for that. You don't have to sign up for either one of these, if you do, you can go to the Y Facebook page and sign up that way, but, um, people are welcome to go there. Um, I think we're gonna have representatives, um, from the Patriots cheerleaders and maybe Pat Patriot from the Patriots will be there. So, uh, those are two events that Y is putting together over the next three weeks.
Great. Anything else?
That's it.
Peter?
Uh, just a question, Charlie, if you could, I, I'm, I'm still on the emails for that MSBA for the, for the, uh, potential Central School Development. Haven't heard, gotten really any updates or heard who the committee is. Have you got any information from the school?
Yeah, I can get that out, yeah.
Yeah. Get it out to the board.
I know they sent in the committee form and it was done on time.
Okay.
Because we got an acknowledgement saying, in fact, um, that they had received it and it was proper, um, Carol's on the committee.
Good, okay.
But I can get the full list for the board.
Been notified of that?
Yeah.
Okay, good, yeah, if you could, let, let rest the board know that, great.
Does that change, that changes to whoever's chair?
I would ask.
Or do you stay on it?
Yeah, no, 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 no.
No, no, I don't know, like, you know how something that goes to whoever's the chair, or is this one of those ones?
Well, I would have to, I'd have to.
Once you're put on it, you stay on it. I'm just saying that because you don't want to do it. That's not my question.
I did the last one.
I would assume it could change and the Board could designate somebody.
Yeah, right. Have they, have meetings or set up any?
No.
No, I think it's still too early. I just, yeah.
Well, I just see the, I mean, probably get, I mean, I probably can.
Well.
I haven't gotten any emails from them.
Yeah, you know, there haven't been, the last thing was a couple of weeks ago when they sent in the committee form.
Yeah.
I know that they pre, the previous deadline of that, what, was sending in, how I'll put it, the education form, basically outlining, here's what the status is at Central, here's how many, we have each of the classes, here's how many rooms we have, how many teachers we have, here's what the rooms are being used for, things like that.
Right.
That went in on time also.
All right, so they've been, they've been on time and all that?
Yes.